Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the 1:30 PM council meeting from the Beloxi City Council. With that, the Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I move.
Suspended by a motion made by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gardens. Discussion?
None.
None? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Court will read their revisit.
...... we're adding five L, resolution number 36125, authorizing an interfund loan with St. Germain Interior Repairs. Adding five M, resolution authorizing an interfund loan from the Economic Development Security Fund for Capital Project 1107, St. Germain Interior Repairs. And we're adding five N, resolution authorizing execution of landowners consent and self-certification related to the Hard Rock Casino.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda as amendment?
I move.
Okay. Any discussions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Presentation, agenda, Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Senior Vice Mayor, welcome to our second meeting again, and thank you for my report.
Very good. Counsel reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Hey, it's beautiful day if I don't worry about that.
Mr. Gardens?
All right. Great wonderful celebration. Mayor came on out. We gave off some great wonderful awards. One of my all-time favorite coaches, Jack O'Leary, was out there to receive an award. But other than that, we had great wonderful, wonderful weekend, a joyful evening until the morning. Thank you, thank you for my report.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
Any updates on the broad route cleanup?
Just like it was.
Nothing worse than this.
No change.
Okay. Are there any homeless on the property now?
I don't think there is. Second change tonight.
Of course. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McGilvery?
Mr. Schumaker?
Just one thing. The fall rain, I know pitches and rains overloaded lately, especially in Woolmarket. But I've been inundated the last week or so with rain and ditches. And I had a few of them are old cases that I put in for and requested work be done. Some of them are very simple, but I don't have a stock line. So we got nobody from local workers here, but maybe we could pass on a couple of words, please, look at some of those requests and get out to Woolmarket and fix the drainage. And some of them are very, very simple. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Just got a couple of vibes. First, to the Traffic Committee, I understand there's an effort or a request that I put in for Wetzalalaw for some sign determinants that a couple of signs are being considered. I appreciate the efforts of the Traffic Committee reviewing that situation. On grass cutting, there is some grass cutting activity along Palm Sperry and Cedar Lake that's beginning. It was hot raining out there for everybody to kind of navigate around that situation, but I really appreciate it. And then for Craig Ross, I entered a request on fixing a leak in the middle of Brody Road. And it looks like repairs to that leak in the middle of Brody Road has been resolved or it's almost completed. I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts there. Thank you, everyone, for their involvement. We'll move on to the public agenda, citizens' comments. We have a total lot of time, 45 minutes. I'll start on one side of the room. Raise your hand to be recognized. If you come up to the front of the podium, make sure you speak clearly into the microphone, your name and your address. And you can speak on any topic. This is not a Q and A, but it's certainly an opportunity for you to state your feelings or opinions. So with that, we'll begin the start on my left, your right. Anyone would like to speak?
First of all, I know...
Your address, sir?
Uh-huh.
Your name and address, sir?
First of all, I know it's gonna be...
Your name and address, sir?
Still?
Yeah.
Still Bob, right? Good?
We're good.
A lot of talk was coming in about the clinic today, which is staying on a lot. First of all, a couple of things. Microphone's not working. Press it, run it.
There it is.
It's working now.
Working now. You get there.
Good.
We're getting there.
Blood sample? A lot of talks gonna be about the clinic. That more starts, everyone knows how we feel. Situation has brought a lot of attention to things. I'm not against anybody. Just want to let everyone know how thankful I am. I think everyone has come together to support our community in different ways, especially in the X. I can't believe the amount of opposition to whatever some neighbors have come together and wanted to do, whatever way you guys hope. It's already on the table. I'm in the planning commission meeting. Their position was, in my opinion, already made up before we even spoke, but I'm not gonna waste my time anymore and just do what you think's right. And I'd like to also thank Mandy for putting our neighborhood onto a story, Neighborhood, to help with grants, to fix up homes. Appreciate it. I'd like to thank Dixie for everything she's done for us. I know the mayor can't do anything, but the only thing left to do in our neighborhood is CSX cleaning up the area, and they just come up with one excuse after another. Now they can't cut the grass because the heat beha is bothering. I don't know. Other than that, I've given my best shot at everything, and it seems like after I'm gonna let up a little on fuel here because I'm getting older, we forgot about the homeless problem. Like, I know probably some people are working on it, or me, never had anything to do with it, but you're not gonna have another down hall, or you're not gonna... Where did they go? What's gonna happen to them or something? This has always been about trying to help people dwell a lot less than me, and I think you guys have done it. Take a ride around. And the last thing I gotta say is, I'm sure George knows this, we can't do any better than DK Brothers. They're a disgrace. I mean, they come up with four excuses, go down to Southern and commute. It's a shame, but thank you for it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left or right?
I'm Jared Bostock from 435 Cove Drive. I'm gonna be kind of blunt with you. I really didn't want to come today. This feels kind of like an exercise in futility, and I'm a ball on that regarding the methadone clinic, but it felt internally wrong for me not to show up, so I came anyway. I just wanted to share a few points. I'm not sure if you know this, but in the LDO it states that anything to do with condition used permanent hearings are considered a quasi judicial hearing, and that's separate from what you see for some of the other hearings that we have. I looked into that with the U.S. Supreme Court, and the best way to summarize it is that it's done by a nonjudicial body, and it must provide fair procedures, impartial to decision makers, and the opportunity to be heard as required by the process. I have to bring up a few quotes from the Planning Commission meeting. Mr. Washington, the Chairman of the Planning Commission meeting, before anybody had a chance to speak against the clinic, he stated, "Jerry Creel, in opening statements, stated that there were no violations here, so you are obliged." That was a statement made before any opportunity against the clinic ever had a chance to even speak against it. He already stated where he stood on it. And then I kind of want to cite a few Supreme Court cases here, and a really good quote of Justice White, and I'm sure the attorney for the clinic knows this one, in Withrop v. Harkin, where it says, "Not only is a biased decision maker constitutionally unacceptable, but our system of law has always endeavored to prevent even the probability of unfairness." And then there's another case sometimes called Cinderella Law, and this is a D.C. Circuit Court case where it says, "A disinterested observer may conclude that the decision maker has in some measure adjudged the facts as well as the law of a particular case in advance of the hearing." And that type of behavior I consider rather shameful, of course. But I want to mention that one other member of the Planning Commission stated, "I would say in 2016, that was the opportunity for people to come forward and say whether or not to impose this methadone clinic going in." Well, unfortunately, and this is another case, our Community Development Director inappropriately notified people online, only three days in advance, and this is near packing party on Fashion. It's in front of you today. Only three days before the 2016 hearing to get on the city website. It's required 15 days out. So we talk about, you know, the statement as well by the clinic, where they say, "Our patients see us daily, and our deliberate dose of methadone." We know that that was misleading. I would ask that you guys ask them, and they'll stop giving the boxes out, because if they won't, it's not being what they said. And then you add the part where the city leader vote a permit if all statements were made misleading and/or when the state was made. Well, the state was made by the city because there wasn't a qualification. Then you have unbiased decision-making issues, and then, of course, the state provided. So, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? My left, your right? Me, microphone, my right, your left? Mr. Trump, come on up. You'll be next.
May I approach? Mr. President?
Come on.
Mr. President, my first, one name face, Daniel Booth, Brandon, Mississippi. I appreciate y'all for being here for today. What handed out to the council is a package we put together, just so you have everything in order. Addressed a few issues, who's gonna be part of it. First, in the planning condition, the President simply restated what Rick Creel had stated at the very beginning. What Mr. Busco did tell you is both sides on the issue of the clinic and against clinic and opportunity presented evidence. We presented our evidence, the other side offered some evidence. They had a council representative down at the hearing, and they presented Hard Rock. But as I stated, it's found in the evidence that anything that is identified. Mr. Busco mentioned, there is a land development ordinance in the city of Beloxi, and you all know that there are four reasons, four ways for both permanent. As he mentioned in false statements, there hasn't been a false statement, he backed the planning commission record from 2016, and with a false statement. He was asked if a dose of methadone, he said, happened. Mr. Leonard told you in some of those exhibits that we just handed out, that there hasn't been a false statement. The clinic has been operating the same time in Platteville, 2016, as we sit here today. The only issue that the citizens have really brought up, really argued, is property values. And if you look at exhibit N, the packet I presented, we hired a president, and they're property values. And they live in property values on the west side of the clinic, east side of the clinic. And they found that on the west side of the clinic over the last eight years, property values have decreased almost 50%. On the east side of the clinic over the last eight years, property values have decreased almost 40%. So there's no violation of any of the nine requirements for additional use permanent of the land development ordinance. In exhibit O of that package, I mentioned, that's the letter I sent to the city council, just to say you cannot violate a permit. Mr. President, you would not violate a legal permit if there were violations. The city has told you there's no violations. The planning commission has told you there's no evidence of violations. As we sit here today, there are no violations. There has been one allegation of violation in eight years, and the clinic cleaned it up within a month. Public policy. Harrison County, I don't know if many people know, but Harrison County has the highest rate of opioid deaths in the state of Mississippi. Right now, as of today, the clinic is the only one that buys this type of medication, this type of treatment, unless you're in Oregon, Mobile, or Jackson. Over the last eight years, almost 2,400 people, approximately 2,400 people have been treated, and today about 400, almost 400 patients have been treated. So, thank you for listening to me. Thank you for considering this as a reasonable resolution about asking that you follow the law, that you follow the evidence, and that you find that there are no violations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Anyone else? On right? Yes, please.
I'm not supposed to be having a hard time with my name. My name is Jeanne Apple. I'm from Portland, Chisholm, Arkansas. I am the manager, fellow general, a hop, skip, and a jump from the treatment center. I have seen tons of issues, not from that place, from Fatima. Fatima has all the homeless people, and they congregate there. So I actually currently have homeless people at the runoff of my back porch every single morning. Every morning. During my weekends living. I bring them off, I cut them down. It's not that place that's rough. It's just the homeless people. So I didn't even know that place was there. I've been the manager of this place for five years. Didn't know it was there. Nothing about that side of the streets drew attention. However, the police are down Walmart, Fatima. I've been out there in my store all day long because the homeless people. They're not all bad people. They just don't have anywhere to go. But the treatment center, I believe it had an issue with a homeless person living out back, and I had the same homeless person I had arrested. And you start talking to these people over and over again, and you find out about it. This woman, it was a woman, that built this thing with her boyfriend who's out back there. She's just a junkie. They don't serve as junkies. If you drive by it, you will not see people congregating outside. I didn't know it was there. I've talked to neighbors, but they don't know it's there. Then I know it is. So, we're having issues down on the other side, and it has nothing to do with it, and it's the same issues. So if it was that, how would I be still having these? How would Walmart have? How would Fatima have? Well, Fatima feeds them, Fatima clothes them, Fatima lets them take showers. That's the boundary. And they gotta go somewhere. They live on the golf course. I mean, it's not, it's just somebody decided to pick up one building and go, "We don't like it, we don't want it in our neighborhood." I have never seen somebody go to my store that I had their president. I have home employees five, six times a day, four or five nights, and they've never come from that direction exactly, but they've come for the golf course. So it's not, we're having issues. I have issues. And we're not a treatment center. We're just a store. Walmart and I both have the same issues. It's all down the road. It's not just there. But again, I didn't even know that building was the one that building is. I drive by at 5:00 AM. You have cars out there. Nice cars, okay? It's not just raggedy junky cars. I drive a 18-year-old car for forever. I do make money, so I'm not down with anybody that's not that. You can't afford this place if you're just not, if you can't make do or make a living. So it's not the homeless people going there. That's right at the bottom. It's homeless people, you know, the homeless trying to find places.
Thank you very much.
What was your other name, Nina?
Blue. Blue Bull. I didn't say it right.
All right. Anyone else on my right, your left? Yeah, I'm gonna be real quick.
John J. Robinson, 2106, Pointy County, Idaho. The Veterans Administration sent me to the clinic as a, and the VA actually contracts a disease. I was having a problem. The clinic's actually run by a retired Navy guy, who I call a shipment. I retired from Navy myself. And it is a very strict clinic. They run everything light, you know, it's hard over there. You can't get out of line, or you'll be in trouble with the management there. So it's just, it's run properly, and I just wanted to say that. There's no way that, whatever the allegations are or under, I'm valid. Pretty much like you said.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left? Anyone in the back of the room? Anyone else that I may have missed? Okay. Citizens' comments is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. My domain?
Resolution confirmed in D.C. President's plan, targeted at 18th and Pass Road, if they comply with additional use standards bound within the city of Beloxi's land development ordinance.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Sure. Second.
Motion by Mr. McGilvery, seconded by Mr. Gardens. Mr. McGilvery?
Just a couple of comments. We've heard the pros and cons about the issues at the clinic on Pass Road. I've done some research, it's been talked about today and many, many other times, this clinic has been at that location since 2016, is my understanding, as we mentioned. But they've handled over 2,000 clients. The resident, they have 400 that they're working with at this time. As none of the planning commission said, they realize no violations. Director Creel has said the same thing, no violations. Chief Miller addition has said that he's found no violations at the clinic's location. In 2016, when the clinic first opened, from my understanding, Chief Miller has not received one complaint from the residents regarding the clinic. There's no question about there's a homeless problem in the city of Beloxi. We've had a homeless problem for 25 or 30 years that I know of. We have a homeless problem at this point in the city of Beloxi. This clinic has nothing to do with the homeless situation, in my view. This clinic is a win-win, apparently, if they handle 2,500-plus people in need of their services. We've heard on many occasions in the past two or three months from different groups that have been serviced by this clinic, and they've all been positive. I don't see any violation and any reason why this clinic needs to be closed. I think it's a service for the citizens of Beloxi. I think it has nothing to do with the homeless situation. Even the young lady from the convenience store says, she's witnessed no issues there. I think it goes back to, it doesn't want to be in my backyard. Well, I think it's, we're very fortunate as Beloxians to have this location, they're to serve these people that have issues. If we didn't have to, that location, they would be in addition to the homeless people that we're dealing with as we speak. I am fully for this resolution and finding that there's no violations, and they need to stay open. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery, Mr. Gardens?
Yeah, I have nothing in the purse, really, to add to that, but I know, Council of Orange has some suggestions I would love to give.
Mr. Lawrence, recommend us?
Yeah, I know we've been tight here for a long time. Homeless have likely been dealing with the clinic. Homeless have problems hanging around in places. The problem I think we should do, I think we should put with this resolution, they pimps in the property. And in the first 90 days, my pimps in, put the police, call present. So there won't be any problem with the park. Who heard, there's a lot of people ordering in the park, park lot. And what was the correction they had to make, Jared? From complaint ahead? Everybody didn't care what he complained, but you said they corrected the complaints. So there'll be complaints and not... We have code enforcement has never received a complaint from any of them at the clinic. The only complaint that we have, complaint we were notified, last year during July, this department notified us, there was a homeless camp behind the building. You can't see behind the building from Pass Road, so we didn't know if the police department, I don't know, or something, and been disaware of it. So, we notified the property owner, and immediately, I wrote letters to the administration for the new season's cleaning, and they got me in touch with you and said, "We'll get somebody out there." They immediately went to remove the homeless camp in the rear. They cut all the over undergrowth that was back behind there. They cleaned up around the dumpster and put a lock on the dumpster there, and they done some other things, like adding some cameras and increasing some security measures that they have there. And we haven't had another complaint about it. We've been out there every week and checked on it to make sure that they were maintained in the right way, and they have. As part of the council's request, we went around and interviewed the neighbors, the neighboring businesses around there, and just like this lady that spoke, one of the businesses across the street said they had no idea what was in there. They had never had a problem with it. The only other two that even remotely made comments about it, the pawn shop said that they had a homeless person in the pawn shop one day, and that they had a customer in the pawn shop one day, and that a homeless person walked in, and when the homeless person walked in, the customer walked out. That has nothing to do with the clinic. The veterinary clinic told us that one of their cats went in a city with a family cat, it was with a homeless person on the wrong corner. Again, that's got nothing to do with the clinic. So the argument from the beginning has been that the clinic is drawing the homeless problem there, and we just can't find any evidence of that at all. I mean, just, just the fact that the parking lot is full of cars would tend to indicate that it's not a homeless problem. And in the last meeting before the planning condition, Mr. Burks, or one of the directors, made a statement that right now they have 389 people who received a treatment there, and out of those 389, only two of them are homeless. So we just haven't been able to find any direct connection between the Bethnal Clinic and the other. And then one other thing I would point out, too, we mentioned, you know, not in my backyard, the people who seem to be complaining the most about this live nowhere near the Bethnal Clinic, so it's not even in their backyard. We received no complaints from any of the immediate members about the clinic. It was around, there's plenty of businesses, there's no homeless present back there. We're understanding. My thing is, the pimps in the dent should separate it, and then you go to the clinic, come inside the tent, and then probably only the homeless in there, only going through the backyard, and kind of that. That's the idea, to be offensive and separate completely from the community and the homeless in the back. And by such, like the police department, you stayed before, but the garden, everything is parked out. I think just any police call, ask why you're open the first 90 days, and I'm talking about the next 90 days. Once you pass it, if you had no problem, blow the fiscal. So, I mean, I just think, you separate it from the thing, if you own the homeless person, draw to the clinic. We're the one in the tent. Let me take you... One thing, Mr. Lawrence. The lease agreement, this is my understanding, the lease agreement for the Bethnal Clinic is just a part of the property that's improved. The wooded area behind there is not a part of their lease. So, you know, we can make reference, I mean, the council can make reference to the clinic, you know, they might see the front door, head south, they can do that, but the property is leased from the property. I would like to make one of the statements, too, you know, we deal with a lot of half-truths in here, you know, like my people who step up, you know, to speak, just to try to discredit what's going on. An argument that we didn't advertise as properly is ridiculous. If you were novel originally, the beating before the planning condition was scheduled for the first of May, and at the request of the applicant, it was extended until 5th of June to give them time to get their case together. So, you know, they had plenty of time, there was plenty of time, everyone was notified. And just like the other planning condition case, we notified everyone that's within 200 feet of the property. In this case, we went 250 feet. I have a list here of 30 property owners that were notified that attended that area. And Chief Miller, you know, you may want to talk to Chief Miller, there's assertions that there's always police officers at that place, and I think there's problems like that. Not trying to get, you know, put in the revolution, but it depends on this one, this stuff, and then it's a separate, you know, he said, he just pimps in, where do you go inside that tent to go to the clinic? And that way, there's nothing about the neighbors running through, yard, backyard, all that. Pimps in, the building itself, you go, get out your car, and go and do the hunt. That's, that's my idea, separate it from the community. Not, not close them down, just separate it. So that by the way, they said they were running through the backyard, they don't have, pimps in, they go to the clinic, they leave. There's nothing to say about, because they said about water and park lot, and that's all we're gonna put the police call, but like the first 90 days, once we pass this resolution, and then don't bother, you just pull the police call. So, that's the two things I'd like to make to the revolution.
Let's get some more comments. We'll show that I did that, and then we'll hear that. Is that okay?
Sure.
Ms. Newman? Okay. Mr. Shoemaker?
I'll just say a few things. I have to echo with Councilman, you always said a few minutes ago, and I don't want to discount or discredit any of the neighbors in the surrounding, you know, proximity of the clinic. I've spoken to multiple, multiple neighbors, and I understand the frustration. However, that being said, the city's, I think, done what we were supposed to do. An investigation has been conducted, and we have found no issues there. The police have responded to multitude of calls. So I just don't know that I can support anything shutting it down. Now, I personally don't wish it was in the location or just now, however, there's nothing we can do about that. That was approved years ago. But I just feel that we found no issues in our investigation to show otherwise. So I just, I just want to put that on record, and that's all I have to thank.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. I got a couple of comments before we end with Ms. Newman's comments. While I can understand the angst of some folks with this issue. You know, perception is reality, and when there's activity, it may not be documented, but there's certainly enough smoke where there's fire, that there seems to be enough activity that this caused or has caused some anxiety within this area. Mr. Shoemaker says that we can't do anything about it because it was approved, and he's right, he's right on that. But in the future, when we have a going concern like this that may impact the areas that surround a business, we should take a harder look on what the effects that is going to have on our community and on our residents. The suggestion of a fence or some additional security for a period of time seemed reasonable. I don't know if we can force that action upon the methadone clinic owners. To highly recommend that or for them to consider it, I think it would have an aesthetic appeal to the building, a little bit more discretion to the building. That doesn't mean we're labeling anyone that needs this help, that there's something necessarily bad. It's just that discretion adds a level of discretion before the person seeking help, and I think it adds to the perception that this business is operating discreetly, trying to help people that need help and understanding what effect this could have on the community. So with that, that's my thoughts on it. You know, there was a hearing. People may disagree with the results of the hearing, but we held that hearing in accordance to what we said we were going to do. Those findings came back as they are, and I'll certainly respect those findings today. And with that, I'll yield to Ms. Newman.
So, the whole point of the hearing was to get the facts. It was brought up that we were trying to close immediately the clinic, and politics got involved. But the whole point of it was to get the facts. I felt for our residents, the business owners that are nearby, so again, we needed the facts. My first thought was, well, there was no findings, case closed. I'm going to come to my last meeting and vote that way, and we're gone. This morning, I had a different thought. I want to bring it to the council's attention, that going forward, for you guys, the reason I should have never voted for the methadone clinic in 2016, and I feel terrible that I did for the residents that lived nearby, I am not against those that are in need. Because I, you know, this did start politically and got threatening letters about going to, probably, I don't know, if we held this hearing, maybe get sued, I don't know. The way that they acted here in the hearing that wasn't even called upon, but they showed up, and basically attacked me for wanting to close them down immediately. I was just trying to hold a hearing. That seemed fishy enough to me, because if I'm not in the wrong in any way, then I don't have to do or say anything. Evidence will perceive itself. And just like the threatening letter that I received, there is no evidence. Well, if there's no evidence, then why are you worried? But my point is, Council, going forward, I did vote for this, and I voted for it because they came saying they were trying to help people. Absolutely, I want to help people, and obviously, there's a lot of people in need. So I didn't really know much about methadone on it, but that's all I knew. And then I knew that we were voting on it and the conditional use purposes. So if it doesn't work in that area, or it doesn't work, or if there's issues, we can always pull the permit. Well, obviously, that's not the case. So going forward, if there's any doubt on voting on an additional use, I want to, I want you to remember this case. Now again, the homelessness and that, everyone with a lot of speculation, that's why we were closing down the clinic. And that's not necessarily the case. I'm not saying that the methadone clinic is the issue here totally. But I know for a fact, I live in the area, there has been a change. I know, the residents know for a fact that there has been a change. I know the business owners close by know that there has been a change. And don't tell me that there hasn't been any evidence, because they have sat here several times telling you. I have seen police records. I know it, you know it, Coco knows it, police knows it, code enforcement knows it, Donald Trump knows it, everybody knows it. Is it totally the methadone clinic's fault? No, it's not. However, even on election day, a homeless girl came to me and said, I know I should be mad at you for wanting to close down the clinic. I said, whoa, whoa, I'm not trying to close down the clinic. She said, no, I should be mad, but I have a patient there, but they're not doing things the way they're supposed to be doing. I'm not going to give them all that. That was speculation. There's a lot of, he said, she said, that's been going on, a lot. There might be absolutely no issue within the clinic, I don't know. But because of all the speculations and the threatening and this and that, I've done a lot of research, a lot. And again, I want to apologize for the residents in the area that I personally voted on that clinic, in that area. The methadone clinic is making a lot of money keeping people bound and addicted to something else. And I would love to see nothing more than people actually get clean. Now, there's a lot of speculation that some of the patients who get to take their products off of the site is selling it to even people in jail. People are actually doing drugs on the weekend and using the methadone clinic during the week. Maybe that's why the guy was on the methadone for 21 years. I mean, again, this is not on trial here, but I'm just saying, there's other ways to actually get clean. These people are being bound and staying bound to a different drug. And it does attract a certain crowd, whether they want to admit it or not. And I'm not saying all is bad. Certain things attract, you know, people that make, are a bad apple for the rest of them. And all I, all I can say is there's definitely been a change since we put this clinic in place. And there's no way you can tell me, again, that there hasn't been any evidence. I've seen it myself. And also, the residents themselves got together and got their own lawyer. Now, why in the world would they do that if there was no evidence? So therefore, I understand how the council's probably going to vote on this, given that there's no evidence. Again, that's how I was going to come and receive it. But I personally am going to go ahead and vote against this and nothing else but to say I'm sorry to the residents that I voted for this in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Anyone else have anything to add before we vote?
Can I let them make that in there? Put it in the resolution, that the property be pents in, against the building itself, it pents in, it separates itself from the neighborhood, the other business. And it invites someone to have to go on the fence any time they want. And a lot of stuff that Dixie said is true. I've been selling drugs for the last 60 years, making a lot of the get-in, any time they want to get in. Inside the clinic, outside the clinic, inside the fence, outside the fence. And you got two police officers, then they put up, they put a lot of drugs. You can't stop them. Whether you call the methadone, whether you call the suprachiasmus.
Let me, let me stick to the amendment, Mr. Lawrence.
I understand, that's why I was saying that.
I understand. But as I understand, you are, you want to require this, or you want to suggest it with power you have?
I want to require, you need to separate it from the neighborhood.
All right.
Whether they fall back, they're not falling back.
Peter.
And who may anybody go and try.
Can we, can we require that? Can we attach this and say we require you to do this if you're going to remain open?
You can, you can put just about anything you want to put in there as a requirement, depending on how strict it is, I can, I can guess it will be challenged. I'm not entirely clear if we're talking about the back of the area, or if we're talking about trying to wall it all from pass road. I'm not really clear when you say fence. If you're talking about the way you would do a house, fencing off the back area behind the building, that's a different sort of fence than having a fence with like a guard at the front of pass road before you could even pull in. I'm not, I'm just not clear with that.
I'm trying to figure out. To go to the clinic, you have to go to the fence to get there. You don't even have to back yard. But to get to the clinic, you have to go behind the fence. Now, I think in the past, there were other businesses that got, some homeless in it too. Not just this, but what you need to do is do every fence, and if I go there, get out my car, go around the fence. You don't have to fence in openly, spark like Jerry said, it's a big piece of problem. But you're trying to stop the people, that's my conclusion, the homeless, anybody who want to call. They won't be around, they won't get to go through that problem. And that's the purpose of fence. And yet, we could just have a resolution, and then you want, that's what we up here, well, we suck the ball. Yeah, we suck this thing. That's what we did. Yeah, they had to public here in the element, doesn't it? We vote.
Mr. Lawrence says, I understand you, you would like a perimeter fence placed around the methadone clinic if we approve their, that they're in compliance and that they continue to operate. Is that what you're proposing?
But can I? Actually, I'm different. We didn't have a government solution, not anymore.
I just, I just want to make sure I have this correct.
I'll get all ten out of shape, so they have time to do it.
Mr. Lawrence adds in, to add a perimeter fence to New Seasons Methadone Clinic to this resolution. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Newman. Any additional discussion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
If we're going to require a fence, we need to, just like the attorney said, Peter, we need to know what type of fence. We need to know the parameters and how. We can't just on the trail and say we want fence without any guidelines. So they have to be guidelines. So right now, if we do an amendment and ask him to put up a fence, what kind of fence are we going to put up? So.
The chair is open to the suggestion?
Yeah, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, if we're going to do that, we're talking about table tennis until we come up with some type of parameters, because he can just put up a three-inch fence, or maybe an inch fence, throw it out and say, oh, we got the ass. And that's good. That's not, I know that's, that's being a little facetious, but. But the point I'm trying to make is, we have to have parameters. If we're going to do something, we just can't all the trouble and throw it out to him without any directions for him.
I don't know if we got a six-foot, we're going to dent, it's really a duty thing. Six inches?
But how, I'm talking about.
The back of the building?
Over the side of the building, out, and then how far back are we going to go to?
Cover it. Just like you do out.
But it has to be on paper. We need to, we need to have this on paper.
All right, gentlemen, how about this? We, we say a six-foot perimeter fence that will surround the property. I mean, it's going to have to go through and get approved. The fence has to be approved ultimately anyway, if they're going to put up, any type of fence has to be approved by planning, correct, Jerry? So as approved by, by community development, is that okay? Is that kind of it?
The only thing I'm like, you don't need to fence in all of that rock, that's all I'm going to say.
Can you help?
I can make a suggestion, Eddie. All right. I mean, perhaps, I'm not saying to take this, but prove it as it is and direct the administration to meet with the clinic about what sort of potential security measures could be in place, understanding that it's not being required, we're going to discuss with them what can be done, and report back to the council next month.
Council is suggesting that we approve as is with the recommendation that our, our planning commission or our community development meets with the owners to discuss certain security measures as it relates to a fence, a perimeter fence.
I'm going to see the fence today and come go through the administration, anybody else. If it's 10 years, you get anything done.
I understand, that's what we're discussing.
If people in the neighborhood want something done, and that's the purpose of actually separating a piece of property from the neighborhood. Whether you go through it or not, what you put in that fence of, you do, you call it a six-foot fence, put something to the back of the building? I'm like, Jerry, I don't think you need to do all that at all.
What I'm not to do is, Mr. Lawrence, is if you have the counsel.
It's going in the direction of reporting the fence. And if there are concerns, if there are things going on with the property that need to be seen, I would not recommend a privacy fence. I would recommend a chain link fence so there's visibility where anything that happens on the property is in the open, where it can be seen by the police or whoever is passing there.
Mr. Lawrence, this is your amendment, so I don't put words in your mouth. There's a suggestion of, I'm going to call it a six-foot chain link fence around the perimeter of the property. Is that satisfying your intent?
Would you, would you do the whole piece of property just as a tough?
I would do it to the back of the building. Once you get to the back of the building, there's a six-foot clearance there, and it is wood all the way back, and it actually almost looked like a wetland there in the back. So if, if you're going to recommend a fence, I would say around the part at least, which is the first half, which is the approved, that would be my recommendation.
And do a chain link fence, six-foot chain link fence. I made that right up ahead.
Mr. Lawrence makes that notion that we approve this with the amendment of the six-foot chain link fence around the perimeter of the methadone clinic, excluding the back of the property that is wooded. Correct. Do we have a second? From, we do, we already have a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, again, again, I just wanted to say, you know, from a engineer's standpoint, it needs to be put on the paper. And to vote on something, just saying six-foot fence in the back of the methadone clinic doesn't really tell me anything. It has to have parameters, it has to have numbers, it has to have duration. And right now, we're just on the trail and saying something out of the group, we're just forwarding it out there. We need to, even if it takes us another week to next week. We can table this, bring it back next week, planning commission can give us the parameters and have someone look at that, an engineer can tell us where the fence is going to go, and we can look at a sketch of what needs to be done. Right now, I'm in the blind because I don't have a clear understanding. You're just saying chain link fence, and I don't have a clear understanding of how this is going to look. So my point is, I need to know how it's going to look, if I'm going to vote for that.
Understood. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, please. I agree with Councilman, it's God's, excuse me.
I agree with councilmen, guys, excuse me. I mean, is it a walk gate, park in the parking lot, walk through gate, somebody lets you in? Is it a mechanical gate that opens when a car pulls in? Do you have a code? I just, I don't support it regardless, personally, but I just think that we need it, I agree on paper. I mean, we're saying the chain link fence, six feet, where does it cross on the north side? Where does it cross on the west side? Is it the entire property? I mean, again, you got the parking lot, somebody's gotta get in, somebody's gotta get out. You know, I just think there's a whole lot more to it. And two, is this, and I know, Councilor Lawrence, you mentioned 90 days earlier, was that just the police presence, or that they're using? So the fence forever to the police presence was just for the 90 days?
The police movement.
Yeah, okay. And that's all I have, I just have to agree that we, I feel we need something on paper, showing exactly where, what, how, I mean, that's all I have.
Jerry, we have a person in the parking lot, right?
I'm sorry?
Do you mind changing the parking lot? You said all the 90 days.
Well, you know, the correct person to make the lease line, the part that they actually lease, which is, they have a legal description, I don't know, the lease agreement for where that is. If you follow that, that's very specific about what they lease now. I don't think we want to have a gate that automatically opens and closes, because we don't wanna have to tack up on pass roads, you know, because there are a number of cars that go into this property every morning, out of the fog, and leave, they're entered in at two o'clock, some of them coming in. But I think if you just, if the residential nation is gonna be more fence, if you would just add the requirement that it followed the lease line, then you'd be good, and that would give us something to work with.
So if we gave you a week to give us a legal description of the fence, would that be enough time to bring something back to us?
I'm sure it would be, we can work with Mr. Hurst and Mr. Green to get that information again.
And what's one week?
Just a lot of people. I was just gonna do what you said, if they're locked, they're gonna be closing, separating the neighborhood, filing a round, and I don't think that's being automatically gated, and they open it up and they close it. That's all.
Alright, are you okay to withdraw your second to the second and the first? If we draw it, we can table this for one week? And if we can bring back the amendment one week, when we hear some of the details from Mr. Creep?
Yeah, we can have it the next week.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah, but we don't have to have another main team need to get it done, bring it to the next year.
We can do that, yes, sir.
So you withdraw, we're drawing the amendment this time?
Right.
And now, we will, the chair will consider a motion to table this for one week.
Second.
Alright, moved by Mr. Gans, seconded by Mr. Lawrence, any discussion?
Table for one week.
Yep, all in favor? Motion carries to table for one week. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, all opposed? Alright, we need to vote, four to two. Alright, motion on the consent?
I'll second.
Alright, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gans. Mr. Lawrence? Fugger on B.
Take something with, we're visiting former Marine, research. B.
Yes, C M R has some heritage-type brands to build as a rental structure, so it seems that they're in there, but yes, that great money is coming from C M R for, over.
But just they will break out? Okay, so we're gonna need more money? What else we have to do to get it working?
This is just for the roof prepared, is this roof? Yes, roof, yes, and we will need more for interior.
Okay. Like the other gentleman checking out. And that's what we have is, Mayor Paul Fockler, we joined from the dentures, we had the tables, and we picked out a piece of equipment that they had, and we already had the money to put up a new piece of equipment, and we're gonna have the gates, all this stuff's inside this, they're listed, they're talking about replacing some of the gates and fences down.
We're gonna, we're gonna, anyone? On George K.
K.
Right.
She's unloading the equipment right now.
Say what?
They're unloading the equipment right now, right? Unloading the equipment, have purchased right now.
So the tables, we put more tables?
I'm not sure.
Right.
I know we're gonna play fun, but.
Yeah, I know we're gonna play fun, so there's dollars also within that, within the tables and the dentures, so people just sit there and watch their kids play with them. And then gates, we're gonna see gates, the gates are probably, the fence is up and down, but the gates are right in front of the play. So it's all that stuff, wanna make sure of, and then this part here is just particularly cleaning that up.
The question is whether they have the tables?
Does that table, my intention is for it there. That's all the quarter will be written in, aside the view.
Well, what it was, the demo, the old equipment right now, right? And I'm noticing the new equipment was happening right now, the playground, yeah, I'm sure the table, yeah, the table.
And the other one, we got to go back down about the swing with the 200 pounds, and he's ever got arrow again.
What, you got my hobby last?
I think last night, they talked about carpet holding, and there were a few other items we wanted also do in the interior, and the comptroller didn't like the way we wrote the resolution, so she wanted it to cover a little more of the things, you know, as well as the carpet.
Is 200,000 gonna finish the job?
Yeah, that's the same, everything's the same, we're just allowing for any additional little things that are like carpet, may have, not a lot of things.
And here's the other one that George just said, is five M. My question to both of you, I'm gonna pay the money back. Who's gonna pay the money back for the same, if you're buying? Who's gonna pay the money back?
Own rate, own rate, we're doing.
200 pounds, 100?
Yeah, it's 100, all of one year.
That sounds great, better than anything that happened. 200,000?
Yeah, you don't have to do it all in one year, you don't have to do it all in one year, that's the whole point. Rather open it, the way you can add 200,000 to get it down, comes the whole point of accelerating, finishing this thing.
Yeah, I think you need some more, just one, can create one of them.
But we're, they're waiting to wait, we have to.
Yeah, that's a tough call to make fundraising. And then the other one, five M, there's another board, 200, 200 bars again, from the Ticonderos, but five M, how we came that?
Yeah, there's the same one connected with the sign, there's five L, rescinds the one we did.
We did like two weeks ago or last week.
And five M is just the replacement for that.
Okay, this is correct, and would you want to give, and I, that we don't want to.
That's all. Alright. Mr. Gans? Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilbert? Mr. Shoemaker? I have none. I'll go ahead and take the vote on the consent, and then we'll have the exceptions. All in favor of the consent? Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
None.
None. Mr. McGilbert? Mr. Shoemaker? I have none. We'll go ahead and open up coenforcement hearings.
Item A, Lynn Schmidt, zero Rarignore Street, that case has been resolved. Item B, James Van Wynn, 188 Popsi Street, that case has been resolved. Mr. Lawrence, you had asked about that. The violation, they had five junk vehicles in the yard, and they're all gone now, so that has been resolved. Item C, Billy J. Scaram, 306 Crawford Street, that case has been resolved. Item D, Carmichael Property Group LLC, 348 Elmer Street, this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Carmichael Property Group LLC, 348 Elmer There being no one, this case is closed.
Item B, Felix and Irene Harris, zero Savannah Estates Boulevard, this property is still in violation.
What's the violation?
Overgrowth, neighborhood.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Felix and Irene Harris, Savannah Estates There being no one, this case is closed, along with the coenforcement hearings. Chair, entertain a motion for the routine agenda. I'll move. I'll second. Alright, moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gans. Mr. Lawrence?
Change that for me, the Walsh agenda.
Alright, we got the Walsh agenda, Walsh, come up here.
Walsh agenda. Bring some money up here, Walsh, we need checks. We don't need fight, we don't need checks.
The highest paid employee for the city of Bucks, and there he is, right there.
Whoever goes that bad, they have armed with adult leverage, possibly, so.
Anyhow, we don't have anything in the pipeline yet, that we haven't had a payout or invoices that come up for the city of Townsley Dock on June 24th, the next meeting. We will have various design interference, you know, invoices around 360,000, we'll have a payout for the case, that's close to 240,000. So those will be reviewed by the main event department, and then they'll add additional funding for us, but currently, we have four of those sixty days of bank funding from the, so we're, we're doing well.
Great, you're quick, you're too far, you have the next bit?
Yes, sir. I'll be on June 24th, Doc. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to the routine agenda? We'll go ahead and vote on it, all in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to recess. A gentleman will be seconded. Alright, moved and seconded by Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Gans, all in favor? Those opposed?